Yeah.
Your Honor, I think my scout did that.
Okay, all right. He'll hand it over to the gals. All right, okay. Girl Scouts, would you like to come forward to the chairs and lead us in the Pledge Allegiance to the flag?
Flag's over here, gals.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that's a great job. So, well, thank you so much, girls. And I commend them. It's such a beautiful day we have today and you're doing your civic service here, coming to see what your local government does for Albany. So, okay, thank you. All right, could we get a roll call, Allison?
Olson?
Here.
Sykes?
You.
Johnson?
Here.
Kellum?
Here.
Kupczynski?
Here.
Coburn?
Here.
Kenopa?
Here. Okay. First, we have a couple proclamations to read this evening. And first is Mental Health Month for May 2018. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas, all people experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. And whereas, promotion and prevention are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And whereas, there's a strong body of research that supports user-friendly tools that all people can access to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being. And whereas, mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. And whereas, with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas, each business, school, government agency, faith-based organization, healthcare provider, veterans group, and community member has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. And whereas, the Lynn County Mental Health Advisory Board is emphasizing that there is no health without mental health by being involved with public service announcements, health fairs, public speakers, and various trainings regarding mental health issues. Now therefore, I, Sharon Kenopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Mental Health Month in Albany, Oregon. And I also call upon residents, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Albany to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our residents can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 25th day of April 2018. And with this proclamation, we do have Dick Knowles, that's here. And Dick, would you, did you have anything you wanted to say? I think you handed out a packet. Okay, all right. Okay. Okay. Well, thank you, Dick. Yeah, Dick's been very involved in the community when it comes, and he's a part of the Lynn County Mental Health Advisory Board. And even clear back when we had our 10-year homeless plan, 10 years ago, Dick was very involved making sure that, you know, folks with mental health needs were going to be identified in and being able to be cared for in that plan. So, thank you so much for your service. And he's on the heartboard also. So, very active. Thank you, Dick. Okay. Next is a proclamation, and this one's Global Love Day for May 1, 2018. Whereas, the Love Foundation, Inc., a nonprofit organization, has announced Global Love Day to facilitate establishing love and peace on our planet. And whereas, Global Love Day will establish a worldwide focus toward unconditionally loving each other as we love ourselves. And whereas, we are one humanity on this planet. All life is interconnected and interdependent, and share in the universal bond of love. Love begins with self-acceptance and forgiveness. With respect and compassion, we embrace diversity, and together we make a difference through love. And whereas, the Love Foundation, Inc., invites mankind to declare May 1, 2018 as Global Love Day, a day of forgiveness and unconditional love. Global Love Day will act as a model for all of us to follow each and every day. Now therefore, I, Sharon Kenopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim May 1, 2018 as Global Love Day in Albany, Oregon, and invite all residents to observe this day, which honors a public cause for global love, world peace, and universal joy. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 25th day of April 2018. Okay, all right. And that was kind of a good fitting of a proclamation for having girl scouts and a boy scout with us this evening, too. So, because we know a lot of what you do, it carries a lot of love for the community and for your service, so we want to thank you. Okay. And next is Schedule Business, and this would be business from the public. Is there anyone here this evening? Yes, Lisa, and then Barry?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Good evening, Council. I'm Lisa Grotto. I'm the Executive Director of the Albany Downtown Association, and I just wanted to give you a quick update. Last weekend, we had a nice group of volunteers doing a street cleanup. Folks swept and picked weeds and cleaned our downtown streets to get ready for upcoming events like this week's Restaurant Week and Wine Walk coming up on May 4. Also wanted to let you know that the lovely hanging baskets will return. Plan to put those up on Sunday. It may be raining, but we are in Oregon, and we still put up hanging baskets when it's raining. So, I just wanted to give you-
And how many baskets this year?
We are up to 114. Last year, we had 65 due to the streetscape, but now that the new poles are in, we have acquired more hooks to bring those beautiful baskets up and down Lion Elsworth as well as Second and Third to join the ones that have been on First.
Yeah. And do you have plenty of volunteers for getting baskets?
I am, of course, looking for more volunteers.
Well, and maybe there's some, a boy scout leader here that maybe he can spread the word.
I would like to thank the-
Sorry, Bob.
Anyone who would like to help would be invited to join us at Two Rivers Market on Sunday at 9:00 a.m. Expect to be out and about for a couple of hours, and there will be some sweet treats from one of our local restaurants as a bribe.
Wonderful.
And I, while I'm here, and the girl scouts and boy scouts are here, I'd like to thank both of them for their contributions that they make to the downtown. They both provide concessions at our Movies at Monty's, and the boy scouts are also instrumental in cleaning up one of our parking lots as well as putting out the flags during so many holidays throughout the year.
That's wonderful.
Thank you so much for allowing me to provide an update.
You bet. Thank you so much, Lisa, for all you do.
I have news if anybody needs them.
All right, thank you. Okay, Barry.
Am I supposed to state my name and address, aren't I? So, Barry Hoffman, I live at 1240 Eleventh Avenue Southwest in Albany. Most of you know me as the Transit Supervisor for the city, but tonight I'm here as a member of the public. In my off time, I now volunteer to serve on the Board for TFA for the Limit, a nonprofit Albany competitive project. TFA stands for Total Football Academy, the other for the ball. And currently, the club is serving around 400 youth in the city. I personally have three daughters who are on teams with TFA. I want you to know about an event that's coming up on May 2 at 7:00 p.m. Portland Timbers U-23 team is coming to South Albany High School to play an exhibition match against the Starfire Football Club from Medford. The Timbers U-23 is part of the development system for the MLS Timbers, and they are now based out of Salem and play their home games at a stadium at Willamette University, but they'll be playing at South on the 2nd. This will be a first-ever semi-professional soccer match right here in Albany. Tickets are $5, and there will be food vendors on site that night. Also, some of the Timbers Army supporters have indicated they have intention to come cheer for their U-23s. The Timbers Organization has graciously agreed to donate proceeds from the game to South and West Albany High School Soccer as well as to TFA for the Limit. I want to inform and invite each of you out to the game, and TFA has donated tickets for City Council. I'm going to put my boss to work, Peter, and tickets for you. And I just want to invite you all out to the game on May 2, 7:00 p.m. It's going to be fantastic.
So, Barry, I did see it on Facebook, so who contacted them to get him to come here? Who was the part?
The Director of Coaching is a gentleman by the name of Logan Hoffman, and we're no relation, but he was unable to come tonight, and he has relationships with the professional and semi-professional teams in Oregon, and if I remember right, across the nation, including the USA Men's Team back a few years back.
Wow, wow.
He's kind of connected.
That is great, so.
And he lives here in Albany?
I, you know, I haven't been to his house, but I think he does.
Yeah. Oh, that's great.
Come on out, it's going to be great.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much. And I had, actually, I had no idea there was that many youth that was playing, you know, on those teams, so that's great. Thank you, Barry. Okay, anyone else from business from the public? Okay, I haven't seen anyone. Okay, Council, first then, we have first reading of ordinance. And Sean, would you like to read that one? This one would be over Uniform Fire Code. Or did the chief want to say a few words about it?
Only a few questions.
Okay. Is there questions on this item? Nope. Okay, all right, Sean.
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, Chapter 17.28 Uniform Fire Code.
Who'd have it read a second time, Title only?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, Chapter 17.28 Uniform Fire Code.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Chief, it seems like you've crossed out an awful lot of stuff here. Does it appear someplace else? I, I'm ashamed to say I didn't study every word that you crossed out.
Well, it's either covered in the current edition of the code or is areas that we don't enforce anymore. This code went back many years, and there are certain areas that, over time, we've realized they weren't actually enforceable. And so, we eliminated those things that weren't enforceable, and then we're just going with the state-adopted code as opposed to having a local ordinance.
I don't have any specific angst over any of them. I was just wondering all the crossing out.
I see some of them dated 1982.
Correct. They're old. There was time.
And weren't even listed appendix for Christmas trees.
Yeah, correct.
I know. Yeah.
Doesn't it say no candles? Doesn't it say no candles on Christmas trees?
I think it does, yeah.
Okay, any more questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, thank you. Next is adoption of resolution, and this would be to enter into mutual aid agreement with the other fire departments and fire districts. Did you have anything you needed to say on this?
No. If there's any questions, it's old language that needed to be updated that was not gender neutral. It said that we supplied men and equipment, and that's not the makeup of our department, so we're just trying to bring that more in line with who we are as an organization.
Do have a question. It's not on this, but my worry about this is what may happen with the next one. Has the Millersburg Council signed off on the IGA?
They have not signed off on it. They're waiting, they've approved it, but they're waiting until the Albany City Council agrees to it before they sign off on it. But if the Albany City Council approves it tonight, they'll sign off on it tomorrow.
Okay. My worry is, if for some strange weirdo reason that we didn't get it passed, and then Millersburg then decided to go elsewhere, if for some reason they don't, didn't want us to do it then, we would still be on the hook to fight all the fires at Waukang.
We are anyway.
Yeah, well, we are now, but we wouldn't be being paid like we are now.
That's true.
We would have to do it for free. And if we're going to do it for free, we need to demand that somebody get the training so they can do it. I mean, anyway, your assurance? Okay, great, fine, let's do this.
Yeah, and they have given every indication they will approve it. They voted, it was approved unanimously by their council banner into the IGA.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, there's a resolution on page 15.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And next is resolution on page 16, and this would be the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Millersburg for fire protection and lifesaving services.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. Thank you, Chief. Okay, I had allergies going, but, okay, adoption of consent calendar. Is there any items that need to be pulled off this evening or entertain a motion?
2C.
2C. Any others?
Move to adopt the remaining portion of the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. And 2C.
Just a question on the discussion, on the information that was presented to us, and maybe Lisa might even be able to address some of it, I don't know. It talks about revenues resulting from assessments reused for X, Y, Z, a bunch of them, which is fine. Since 2013, how much revenue has that generated for us? Or for them, I guess is the right way to put it. That's the first question, and then one more.
The numbers that I've seen recently, the annual is approximately $30,000.
$30,000 a year? Okay, cool. And then the other question, it says the budget impact, it says, quote, "Considerable City of Albany staff time is included in the current budget." Can we possibly be a little bit more concise as to what that considerable means?
Well, so the work that's involved in this is getting GIS personnel to send us the map, and then we have to go through and determine who's residential, who's not, determine the values. So, Denise Valentino, who's part of my AR staff, has been putting a lot of time into doing it and coordinating the memos and just preparing a lot of this, even addressing envelopes that go out to the owner, business owners in the district. And then, you know, we're pulling in IT staff. So, as part of the setup, there's a lot of work involved. Once it's set up, then it's just a matter of we bill and we collect on behalf of the-
But basically, didn't we already have most of that information from the time it was initially set up?
The information changes. We don't bill, we don't send it to residential customers. So, if we have somebody who has, maybe they used to be a resident, but now they're renting out their property, they would be eligible for this. If property changes hands, the assessed values change, so there's a lot of that that we have to go through each year or each, the beginning of the year. Each additional year, we do have to get the new market values of the houses or the properties also.
Move to approve item 2C.
Can I ask a question? There's two maps here. Should I be able to see a difference in those two maps?
You should not see a difference. Admin staff wanted us to include it with both the memo and with the resolution.
I couldn't find them. I thought, must be, I'm not looking hard enough at it. Thank you.
Two questions concerning this. It says, setting dates for public hearings considering a downtown voluntary economic. Now, does this mean it's completely voluntary that you say, A, B, C, 1, 2, 3, replace, we think you ought to pay this much, and they can say, no, I don't want to?
Yes.
Or is that not-
Sorry for answering. It is voluntary, they can opt out. They can write us a letter and sign it and tell us that they want to be excluded from the district.
Okay. My concern is whether or not there would be a vote that we are authorizing a third party to collect a tax, but seeing as how they have the ability to opt out, I don't have a problem.
Do you hear many people opting out?
We've had a few letters so far this year. But there has to be, more than 33% have to opt out. If that happens, then the district won't go through. But as long as it's fewer than that, then the district can be implemented.
And most of them know, you know, most of property owners know that this is for parking enforcement, you know, this is the main piece that funds it. And so, this really, they want to make sure that there's going to be parking enforcement for-
So, it's 33% of the square footage, or how does it?
It's 33% of the properties with the assessed value on them. So, it, I don't know that we've ever really come close to even reaching that. But we, and we have minimums and we have maximums, so we only, so if somebody owns multiple properties in the downtown area, the maximum that we will charge them is $750 for all their properties.
Yeah, a lot less than it used to be. Yeah, when they had multiple properties. Okay, other questions? Is that right? Motion?
To approve item 2C.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, so we will see you at those two public gatherings, Lisa. Yeah, thank you. Okay, next, this is on page 67. This is the Hospital Facility Authority, and this is where we discovered, this is the committee that never meets, but we discovered that it had to be a part of the Statement of Economic Interest filings. So, yeah, so two, there's two appointments that need to be appointed to it. So, we discussed this earlier where we would just fill it with a couple counselors in those positions, and then when the other position expires to others, and we can just go ahead and have it, you can reappoint a couple other counselors to it. But right now, who would like to be appointed to this Hospital Facility Authority? Bill?
I'm already on it, aren't I?
Right, yeah. Okay.
You can, I'm big enough for two people, you could put me on there twice.
Okay, Bill wants on. Anyone else?
Am I already on?
No. Nope, you're not on it then.
Yeah, I can do that.
You want it? Okay. And I don't believe the counselors, on your statement of economic interest, since you're already as elected, that applies to everybody. So, they shouldn't have to be filling that out separately. Because did you have to, Rich? Did you get a separate?
I got two, but you only have to fill it out once. If you, because there's a, it's just one SCI form.
Okay, all right.
I mean, so no matter how many things you're on, as long as they're all listed there, you are automatically-
Okay. All right. So, is there a motion for appointing Bill and Dick?
So, move in a second.
Okay. Motion's been made in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, we did our business this evening, but now business from the council. And Bessie, is there anything this evening?
No, just want to tell everyone about the email that I had received from a gentleman regarding Republic Services, and so just to read it. And Peter's asking if he could forward it to Julie Jackson, and I said, sure. So, it just, people are saying that they just, they think that Republic Services should have to prove more background, more, just more than just saying, well, this is the way it is, and this is what we want. You know, and they don't agree with that. Not everybody gets the paper, so they didn't even know about the $2 thing. And so, it was, Republic Services, I think, could have done a better job of, I mean, they didn't do any outreach. I mean, and who spends time going on the website of Republic Services? I don't. You know, I mean, I have my bill paid automatically and whatever, but I think they, maybe they could look into some different options and stuff, you know, maybe doing every other week of this and that and whatever. Might save our fewer trucks on the road, who knows? But anyway, he and his neighbors were not real happy campers, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
All right, Bill, anything? Dick?
No.
Rich?
To her point, I pointed out that they could, because now we're talking about a lot smaller volume, and it's supposed to all be clean, so there isn't any reason why they wouldn't be able to pick up stuff once a month. I mean, every two weeks pick up glass, and every other two weeks pick up plastic. I mean, it would do away with a crew that they now have working. So, they could lower their expenses. Anyway, I, I don't know, is, did you forward, did you get my information back to her in the email that she forwarded to you?
Which, the one that she's referencing now?
Right.
I just asked her if I could share it.
Oh. Yeah, and I sent him an email, too, so, yeah. Sure. See what county needs shakes.
All right, okay, great. Mike? Nope, the only thing I had this evening, there was a nice groundbreaking at, for the new Meadow Ridge School east of the freeway. So, it's kind of a beautiful setting, so it was, it was a nice event with the kids playing music, and the kids got to use the shovels for the groundbreaking, so it was really special, so, yeah. So, it's going to be a beautiful school. Okay, Peter?
Just, I have your soccer tickets here if you would like them, Barry.
Yep, it's nice, yeah. Okay, and welcome back.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, all right. Staff, have anything? Oh, yep, that's right. I'm sorry, Jeff, I was going to ask you about that before, so.
So, I was going to, trying to take, I guess, head up repackaging the discussion about Lochner Road sidewalk. Council had indicated that we wanted to make a decision on that tonight instead of the decision on Monday. In doing that, I'm going to significantly oversimplify what is financially a complicated discussion. Around the sidewalk, there's basically three options for you to consider. One would be to not construct that sidewalk on the north or east side of Lochner Road. Staff would not recommend removing it, as you heard for a number of reasons, as Ron mentioned, on Monday, but you could do it. Second option would be to leave the scope of the project unchanged and basically recognize that as it's now a city project and the $600,000 that's being contributed to the project, a portion of that is intended to cover the sidewalk construction. The third approach would be to say that the $600,000 that was originally thrown into the pot was envisioned to cover a portion of the improvements that were original condition of development for the snow tent property. It wasn't envisioned to cover additional costs beyond that, and that you- that you would like to consider contributing additional funds to the project in order to cover the sidewalk cost. So again, I'm oversimplifying, simplifying because the STCs don't work exactly that way, but in concept, it's the easiest way to think about it. So I, Ron had said that that cost was somewhere in the 125, $150,000 range, that's with wetland mitigation contingencies and all of those types of things included, for the entire sidewalk across the Gap's front and Jan across the railroad property. So one option that's available to you, the project, the eligibility of the project from an STC funding standpoint would support allocating another $150,000 in TSTCI money to that project. There are available funds to cover that. If that is something that you want to consider, then we would know that that's on the table. We could go back and work with Snow Temp and actually run through the details of the numbers and make sure it all makes sense to both parties. With all the different funding sources that are coming in to help, help get this project going, it's, it makes it a little bit more complicated, but I don't see any benefit in going through that tonight. So those are really the three options, and I think, I'll speak for Jorge, he can correct me if I misspeak, that really to the point, we kind of need to know what we're, what we're doing here, so we can get this off the ground and start, start designing the project.
Questions, Rich, and then Mike?
Another question. I'm of the opinion that having a sidewalk next to a railroad track is not a good idea. I understand that Mr. Settman thinks it's better than having a crosswalk. I disagree. It's money that we don't have to spend. No one, well, I just, I think option one is the thing we ought to do, just not build it.
Not build it?
Not build it.
Mike?
Well, I have some questions that may or not be able to be answered tonight. But in 1990, the county gave Lochner and a bunch of other roads to the city, and along when they gave the roads to the city, they gave the city $2.3 million for the upgrade of those roads. I'm wondering if that money is still available, or was it spent on other projects not related to the upgrade of the roads that were given to the city by the county in 1990? And I realize that question may not be able to be answered tonight.
It actually can.
Well, just wait a minute. Let me, let me keep going.
I remember the history.
Then, when PepsiCo was going in, the county also gave us, I think it was 1.3 million for Ellingson, the upgrade of Ellingson and Lochner, the other end of it. And I'm wondering where, is that money still available, or is it in the someplace else? Plus, the fact that we just got $800,000 back on economic development to the PepsiCo money. And the economic development funds are for the retainage and development of new jobs in the city, that some of those funds wouldn't be available to help get this project up and done and running. So those are the questions that I have.
Regarding the county's road transfer funds, that was done back in the early 90s, and that was like for Oak Street, and there was Marion Street, a couple other of the ones that were in the city. So by the time it came to the Marion Street reconstruction project, was a very contentious issue, and so those funds were all applied to Marion Street, which only made 17% of the city's share out of those funds for that LID, and the neighbors all paid then for the other 83% of that road.
So what you're telling me then is that 2.3 million, it was given, it was spent and not spent on, because one of the roads, and I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have the documents in front of me, two of the, one of those roads was specifically stated as Lochner. So what you're telling me then, no money was used to upgrade Lochner. So we spent that on another project.
My memory is more, Lochner got, Lochner got transferred more about 10 years ago. That wasn't back in the early 1990s. That was still county.
Bring the documents, bring the documents in.
I think I have that old, that old one I had somewhere, but, so all of it, because of the cost of reconstruction, it was all applied to Marion, and then when we did Oak Street, that was done through an LID on Oak Street, and when Lowe's came in, and then we ended up paying the 4.3 million for Oak Street. So that 2.3 didn't go far on that. And then the other you're talking about, that the county gave, that I'm not, I believe it went for the widening of the shoulders on Ellingson, is what they improved that, and then they did a complete, what, like an overlay type on Lochner, because that used to be a very, you know, pop hole type street.
It was a canal.
Yeah, so then they ended up doing that improvement on it. So those funds didn't go far.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, is we've used the funds for something else, and we have the economic development funds and the PepsiCo money. Why can't we use some of that in a different way to get this project up and running? That's, I guess that's the bottom line.
This doesn't, whether or not there is a sidewalk there has nothing to do with whether or not the project.
You're just talking about the sidewalk, not the whole road?
The sidewalk on the, on the.
Railroad side.
Railroad side.
Railroad side.
Where you wouldn't want your kid to walk down.
Yeah, Ray?
Well, I'm going to be opposed, disagree with my peer, Rich, on that. I think based on the discussion that we already had, and as far as the safety with a sidewalk long term, I believe is much better than just having a crosswalk. And since TSD funds are available to do the project, I think that's the right way to go.
Right. Because as we see many times, we don't do the sidewalks, and then down the road, city has to kick in and do an infill project anyway. So we've got many examples like that all over the city, but. Any, Bill?
Well, I agree with Rich, and what I'm thinking of is we have standards, street standards, sidewalk standards, development standards and so forth, but the key word there is standard, in my opinion, and maybe does take into account unusual or extenuating circumstances. And again, I agree with Rich, in terms of the sidewalk by the railroad tracks, it just, it doesn't make sense. And if you're not going to build that piece, I don't know why you'd turn the corner and go down past the Gap's property for a sidewalk to nowhere. So I would be in favor of.
Well, you were at the work session, so I think some of the conversation came around the fact that you don't build the sidewalk, having a crosswalk there, the kids, they're going to be walking down that gravel shoulder anyway. So why not have a functional, up to standard sidewalk? It's safer to let them do that.
Unless you block it off.
For kids.
Yeah, what kids are you talking about?
Kids, yeah.
It was more looking at full build outs. So say where the, if the Gap's property ever developed, and say if it was housing and you had, then people would be more pedestrians to want to walk, because the only access would be getting back to Marion.
I think if you talk to somebody at Gap's, you'll find out they don't even want to own that property. They'd have no, they'd like to sell it.
Benefit to Gap's is obviously that area would be mitigated, and they'd have sidewalk, and it'd be a cost that whoever their future purchaser was, wouldn't have to, have to.
They make money.
Yes, exactly. Move a little bit of an obstacle. So the challenge here is, is obviously, if this was a Snow Temp only project, they wouldn't be building the sidewalk on the other side of the road, because that wasn't a condition of their development approval. If it was a city-only project, we'd probably be looking at building the sidewalk on both sides of the road, or at least that's what staff would propose from the onset. You have a hybrid here, right? This is a partnership project where you have Snow Temp contributing funds, you have Albany contributing funds, you have the state contributing funds. So you have the decision to make. It's a timing issue. If, if it is a given, which that is debatable, but if it's a given that the sidewalk's going to be done at some point, at some time, it's going to be needed, it's a timing issue. Is now the right time, or is later the right time? Ron gave some reasons why he thought now was the right time. May completely disagree with those, and that's fine. We'll just get the same improvement that Snow Temp would have constructed if they would have went on it alone.
The costs aren't going to get any cheaper down the road.
They are not.
They need it.
Down the road we will.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you want to remember that you said there was something about water retention, that it would be easier to do that if there was a sidewalk constructed there?
We'll have to figure that out when we get into design, how significant that is or isn't. It's obviously easy for us to accommodate when there's a sidewalk there. There may be some additional cost to the project to basically hold those, hold the form of that stormwater quality facility that will basically get picked up and thrown away at the time that the sidewalk's built, some point in the future, whenever that is. I can't tell you if that cost is significant or not, because we don't know what that'll be till we get into the design.
But you're probably going to have to build a stormwater facility thing anyway.
We'll have to build stormwater quality facilities, not only to meet our own regulations, but to meet the state requirements because of the wetlands permitting and the water quality certifications we have to get associated with that. So that requirement's there, no matter what.
Even though it's in the wetlands.
Even though it's in the wetlands.
Interesting. That's on the other.
I think we have to go ahead and build the sidewalk.
Jeff, I'm sorry, I can't remember. How many, how many feet are you talking about? From Marion, how far?
I'm sorry, I don't have those numbers in, in front of me. Ron had those on Monday. But it goes basically all the way from Marion, all the way down to where the youth authority did the street improvements that are kind of hanging out there in between two unimproved sections of road.
And is there sidewalk on the far side from the youth authority?
I don't believe there is, but I cannot say with certainty.
Nope, there's no sidewalk on the east side.
Definitely there.
So there's no sidewalk. Because that was a local improvement district, so, and then the farmer that was across did not want to pay for it, so.
Geez, surprise.
I move that we, to get this thing going, one way or the other, I move that we approve option number three, which is using TSD funds to fund the sidewalk.
With SDC funds? Yeah.
What are you not going to be able to build now, by using those extra SDC funds?
Whatever the next priority project is for council.
Take it away from something else, or sidewalk to nowhere.
So, but they are, it is from capacity-driven type projects, and that's what system development charges are for, is for new areas, so.
It is, yeah. And it's, like I said, it gets a little bit, it comes out in the wash, but the sidewalk itself isn't 100% eligible, but when you, it gets, I'm not even, never mind, forget I said that. Just gets too complicated to try to describe.
Never said.
Okay, motion's been made in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Dick did?
I think Rich wants to say something.
Oh, I just want to go against it.
Scowling.
Yeah, I got the growl going on.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think the motion failed, so.
I move we use option one.
Second.
Okay, and that's with option one.
Just don't build it.
Okay, and any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, and that passes border two. Did you get that, Allison?
Yes.
Okay, all right, anything else?
No, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, does staff have anything else this evening? Okay, our next meeting dates would be Monday, May 7th at 4:00 PM, and I do believe we have a following joint meeting with the planning commission afterwards, and Wednesday, May 9th, that's 7:15. And also, council, remember, May, we've got our budget committee scheduled too. So there's three dates for budget committee?
Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Yeah.
Yeah, one Thursday and two Tuesdays. And I just wanted to remind you of the two stormwater open houses next week, Tuesday and Thursday evenings from 5:30 to 7:00.
Will we be getting out of our work session in time? Do you have a bite to eat? So we're not eating in front of our peers at the planning commission?
We try to make that happen.
Understood.
We'll give you five minutes.
Depends on the topic before you at the time.
I know, I felt bad, yeah. Okay, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you, folks, so much.